Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session. Item one is called to order. Members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties, and masks are optional for all attendees per city of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. First item on the agenda is Mayor's Announcements and City Managers' announcements. I have one announcement here. Actually, I'm going to come back to it because I cannot find that announcement. Let's do this then. I will go to City Managers' announcements, and then I will come back to mine. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No announcements tonight.
Okay. Sounds good. Well played. Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Unless it would help if I had one.
No, it's okay. It's all right.
Do I have a story to tell?
It's totally okay. What I will do here is I will just simply read the statement for protocol of this evening's meeting. Tonight's agenda has a number of meetings that the city council must consider in order to conduct city business. Guidelines for conducted city council meetings are available on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in this room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, I will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during call to the audience. If no cooperation, I will issue a verbal warning and let them know that continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If still no cooperation, I will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If no cooperation, then I will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only to escort them out of the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest individuals if they refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply as well to other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed from the meeting, I will recess the meeting. That brings us to item number three, and I will go back to item number two, but item number three is called to the audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the issue review session and committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda, and there is a three-minute time limit per speaker. I will go ahead and get to the cards that I have here. I've got three this evening. Okay, the first speaker in person is Ann Till. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Ann Till, and I live in Tempe near Southern in McClintock, and I'm a neighborhood chair for Alameda Meadows and a commissioner on the 2050 Committee. And so I'm here to talk about the Budget 4B and the SIP. So I'm here to talk about the need for more trees and shade and green stormwater infrastructure, especially on residential streets, streets like Dorsey and Country Club Way that are really wide are very hot, so they need shade. And also parking lots are hot, so they need shade, so would like to see more there. Our neighborhood really believes in this. We've done several neighborhood grants. One was at Curry Elementary. We did a little rain garden, pocket park, and we worked with watershed management and had about 29 people come out in the neighborhood to help plant the trees. We planted trees at Zella Park, and we also did a Country Club Way design project from Meadow to Balboa, I think it was, with work and Y2K. And so that's actually part of the SIP for, I think, '26, '27. So we especially want to promote that project because we've been asking for it. We went to the Transportation Board in 2015, and I think we kind of kicked off the whole Country Club Way project. I also want to comment on the Smith portion. When I read the, when I went in to review that, the final review, there was no trees on that, and I just don't think that it should have been that way. It was kind of an afterthought. So I would like to request that when you guys look at contractors for doing these projects, and it's very important to get ones that are familiar with GSI and shade and water stuff. Aside from being green, green infrastructure also provides safety on our streets. They slow down traffic. And I want to point out that Country Club Way in Southern has had two, at least two fatal accidents in the last couple of years. One of them, a guy took the pole out and was burnt in his car. So green infrastructure might be a great way to save people and by, say, putting a roundabout in that area, maybe considering more of that on streets like that. The last item is just using woodchip instead of rock. So anyways. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Till. Really appreciate it.
Yep.
The next speaker I have is Morgan Winburne. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Morgan Winburne, and I'm a resident of Phoenix, although I have lived in Tempe. My day job is as an urban agricultural consultant, and my passion in the industry is many. My formal education is in elementary education, and I have shifted recently to teaching all ages how to be food secure. My roots in Tempe started at Clark Park Community Garden as a Girl Scout leader, teaching the next generation how to farm. I'm still with Clark Park seven years later, but now I have a more active role in teaching the general population as a Sustainability Commission member for Tempe and also the garden chair for Keep Tempe Beautiful, for which I advocate for a brighter, cleaner, healthier Tempe through green pathways. I'm also part of the City of Phoenix Backyard Garden Project. I manage several community gardens on how to understand ways to conserve water while being food secure. And I just finished up my Knowledge Exchange for Resilience Fellowship at ASU on the various topics. I continue to expand my expertise in the field on urban ag. Every day, I am having conversations with people on the topic of water conservation and food security as we look to the future of growth and drought. Ten years ago, when I started in this field, Tempe was on the leading conversation about in the community on green issues. I helped the City of Phoenix write their community garden ordinances based on yours, and slowly over the years, we are now trailing behind on our policies on climate change. The shade tree support, supported through the green stormwater infrastructure, is an amazing way to make a long-term impact on our environment. It is the first step, it'll be the first in the valley, but is a proven concept in the desert. In my expert opinion, it is absolutely essential that these items are part of the budget for next year. It is our first steps to a truly robust solution to problems that we will face in the coming years. I asked the council today to take those first steps to continue, to support and ask the Budget Committee specifically on the green stormwater infrastructure to make Tempe running ahead of the standards so that other cities are envious and mimic our solutions, to nurture the citizens with compassion through elements of nature and conservation, and to be effective stewards of the land that we call home and bring back the beauty of our desert in sustainable ways. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. The last card I have is from Kendon Young. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pleasure to see you all again. Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight on item 4B. I stand here before you today as the Chair of your Sustainability and Resiliency Commission and as a member of our community, advocating for an investment that I believe is critical to the well-being and sustainability of Tempe. I urge you to support accelerating Tree and Shade by requesting the Budget Office to come back and present to you additional options to fund green stormwater infrastructure. Imagine strolling down our city streets, the sun beaming down relentlessly, and finding solace under a cool shade of a tree. Picture children playing in a neighborhood, parks sheltered from the scorching heat by canopy of green leaves. Visualize our bustling downtown lined with streets adorned by thriving desert-adapted trees, creating a welcoming and vibrant atmosphere for residents and visitors alike. Trees are not merely decorative elements; they are essential pillars of a healthy and thriving urban environment. They provide numerous benefits that positively impact our lives in ways that we often overlook. From improving air quality by absorbing pollutants and releasing oxygen to releasing or reducing the heat island effect and combating climate change, trees are a silent hero working tirelessly to enhance our quality of life. The scorching heat summer temperatures over 110 degrees are becoming increasingly more frequent and unbearable, and the consequences are felt by everyone, especially the elderly, the most vulnerable, and our children are particularly at risk. Investing in shade infrastructure can be a transformative solution. Strategically placing shade, such as pergolas, canopies, and tree-lined avenues, provide respite from the sweltering heat, encouraging outdoor activities, and fostering a sense of community. Moreover, shade trees and infrastructure often host economic benefits. Studies have shown that shaded streets and green spaces increase property values, attract businesses, and stimulate economic growth. They also contribute to reduced heat consumption by lowering the need for air conditioning, which in turn lowers utility bills for residents and businesses alike. The investment you make today will pay dividends in both environmental and economic terms for generations to come. Funding Tree and Shade infrastructure is an investment in the future of our city. It is an investment in the health and well-being of our residents and an investment in a cooler, greener, and more sustainable urban environment. We have an opportunity to create a legacy for future generations that we'll be grateful for, a city where nature and urban life coexist harmoniously. It's been explained to us by city council that what is on the CIP five-year work plan will go into the bond, and for that, we request that in order to meet our 25% canopy coverage goal, that you request the Budget Office to come back with additional funding options through the green infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure. For that, I thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening wishing to address the city council? If so, please get my attention. All right. Seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting and go back to item 2A, which is our Kids Zone Mayor Awards. So the Mayor's Office of the Tempe City Council are interested in honoring outstanding children in our community and adults who help provide quality care and education for those children. Tonight, we are proud to honor and recognize those children and adults because of their outstanding participation in the Kids Zone enrichment programs. Kids Zone is an award-winning, state-accredited school age enrichment program administered by the City of Tempe in cooperation with the Tempe Elementary School District. It offers an exciting, safe place for students from preschool through eighth grade, where they may interact with their friends while they participate in enrichment activities and develop new interests after school. The 28 students we recognize tonight represent over 1,200 children enrolled in Kids Zone this past year. They were selected by the Kids Zone staff because of their kind and respectful attitude to other children and staff, their initiative and enthusiastic positive participation, their display of cooperation, good sportsmanship, responsibility, and leadership. Kids Zone could not have provided these services without the help and support of some outstanding school partners from the Tempe Elementary School District. While there are too many to mention this evening, there are three we'd particularly like to recognize. The dedicated school partners we honor tonight are individuals who demonstrate cooperation, mutual respect, and knowledge of the importance of quality out-of-school time enrichment. They understand that significant learning still takes place before and after the school bell rings, and their support exemplifies how cooperation between the city and the school district can work at the highest level to make exceptional programming available to children at each school. The three staff we want to recognize tonight are: The first one, the office manager at Connolly Middle School, Yakira Palmerin. Ms. Palmerin has been a tireless supporter of Kids Zone over several years. Kids Zone staff report that Ms. Palmerin possesses infinite willingness to connect Kids Zone with the resources at her disposal, whether that being a foot in the door to open a dialogue with the teacher or directing parents to Kids Zone. Ms. Palmerin took the initiative to make sure Kids Zone received the school event calendar, which is normally sent just to internal school staff. This enabled Kids Zone to anticipate and plan around school special events much further in advance than they could typically. While it is one thing to be supportive upon request or in the face of a crisis, it is another thing entirely to actively pursue and aid a program that is outside your individual responsibilities. Her active and sustained support has helped bolster and strengthen the Kids Zone program. So once again, I wanted to thank Yakira Palmerin, the office manager at Connolly Middle School. Could we offer, yeah, give her a big round of applause. The second person this evening we'd like to recognize is a physical education teacher at Holdupan Elementary School, and that's Alexandra Sokey. Ms. Sokey graciously shares gym space and her PE equipment with Kids Zone. She's also generously offered her office and desk to Kids Zone staff during the school day while she's teaching, so they can work on planning and prep between Kids Zone's morning and afternoon programs. When Kids Zone started out growing its storage space, she has stored Kids Zone's gym cart in her office and offered to give them even more office space to store program supplies and equipment. Ms. Sokey discusses behavior support strategies with Kids Zone staff so they can work together to keep students' days more consistent before, during, and after school, and to help children be more successful. Ms. Sokey is a wonderful advocate, fan, and friend of Kids Zone. Please give Alexandra Sokey a big round of applause. And the last recipient this evening is Dana Leinberger, principal at Rover Elementary School. Ms. Leinberger is a huge supporter of Kids Zone at Rover School. She has built a strong work relationship with the Kids Zone manager and staff to create meaningful connections between Kids Zone and the elementary school. They work together in communication about any events or ideas that arise throughout the school year, and Ms. Leinberger is always open and available to communicate through any and work through any logistics or speed bumps that may occur. Ms. Leinberger is constantly positive and has built not only a great working relationship with Kids Zone, but with her staff and the community that surrounds her. Please give a big round of applause for Ms. Dana Leinberger. So I'll look to Eddie now. We're going to look to show a short slideshow recognizing these outstanding students and school partners. If you could direct your attention to the screen.[1096.65]
It love us too. It bring me down. Can't none bring me down, I said. Bring me down. Can't none bring me down. Your love is too. It bring me down. Can't none bring me down, I said. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like a room without a roof. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like happiness is the truth. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you know what happiness is to you. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like that's what you want to do. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like a room without a roof. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like happiness is the truth. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you know what happiness is to you. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like that's what you want to do. Hey, go. Bring me down. Can't none bring me down. Your love is too. It bring me down. Can't none bring me down, I said. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like a room without a roof. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like happiness is the truth. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you know what happiness is to you. Eh eh eh. Clap along if you feel like that's what you want to do. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like a room without a roof. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like happiness is the truth. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you know what happiness is to you. Hey eh. Clap along if you feel.
Please give everyone a big round of applause. I also realize I should listen to that song every day before I get dressed in the morning. So because it's pretty much impossible to be unhappy when you listen to a song called Happy. All right. Let me next get here to item number four, which is the issue review session. The first item we have is item 4A, Community Health and Human Services Impact Report, fiscal year 2021, 2022. And I'm going to now call upon Tim Birch, our Community Health and Human Services Director, as well as Octavia Harris, our Deputy Community Health and Human Services Director, for a presentation on item 4A. I got a question, too. Tim, is this your first presentation in front of council?
Yes, sir, it is.
All right. Everyone be very nice, so.
You set them up to haze a rookie, but thank you.
Tim, just for the audience's thoughts here, how long have you been at the job now?
This will be my fifth week on job.
All right, so fifth week. Can we give Tim a big round of applause for joining us? With that, the floor is now yours.
Right. Hello, Mayor and Council. Tim Birch, Director of Community Health and Human Services. I am joined with by Octavia Harris, who is the Executive Director of Tempe Community Council. We want to thank Octavia for her leadership and her expertise in nonprofit management. A lot of the success you hear today was responsible through her leadership. And also Jaclyn Distrems, who serves as the TCC Community Impact Chair, who led this process of agency review that we'll talk to you about as well. And want to thank and recognize her for her effort in that role. The work of Community Health and Human Services, as well as the TCC Agency Review Process, supports five of the council priority areas through 11 measures. It's reflective of our internal department initiatives, such as community housing choice vouchers, counseling, or justice programs. And you'll see it in the agency review work as well through programs like a New Leaf's East Valley's Men's Shelter, as well as the Tempe Center for Rehabilitation. We did want to take just a moment. I recognize that the mayor and council and city management recognized some of the wards that were gathered recently by the staff inside Community Health and Human Services. Just want to recap and take a moment to celebrate the work that they do. But also recognize some of the volunteers. I think we might have some here from Tempe Community Council as well. And the work that they do goes unsung quite frequently and is recognized through the ASU School of Social Work Community Impact Awards. Just want to take a moment to recognize and celebrate them again. The work they do helps equate change into people's lives. One of the changes that you'll notice in this year's presentation is that you did not receive the published report as a backup to this item. That's because we're happy to announce that the Community Impact Report has migrated to an online platform. It's available at chhs-impact-report.temp.gov. We will have that URL displayed for folks at the end of the presentation. We wanted to continue to work on presenting our information in a way that is very public and transparent to the community. This report is explorable. You can go into it. You can view it by area of interest. You can look into each of the funded programs. But it's not just a report. We wanted this also to be another gateway for individuals to, who need help, to find out who provides that help in the community. So you can click on a connect tab on each one of these program areas and find out how to connect with that funded program and then make that connection there. A lot of connections were made this last year. United Food Bank provided over 560,000 meals to food insecure Tempe residents. Additionally, Not My Kid provided 1,700 unique students with coping skills and strategies to deal with the difficulties that life throws at them. If there's really critical social, emotional learning and students return to the classroom post-pandemic, I want to thank them for their efforts. And of course, you've heard recently about the over 12,000 contacts that the HOPE program has made in the streets of Tempe, reaching out to individuals who are unsheltered and having perhaps a worse day of their life, trying to connect them to the mainstream resources they need to get them back and put them on a path of self-sufficiency. But behind every one of those data points is a person. And so we want to make sure we also give you a qualitative look at this. And in the report, there's also some vignettes and stories. And one of those we'll highlight is Sharon, who is a local Tempe resident who worked with one of our funded partners at TCAA. And thanks to their financial coaching and some job assistance, she was able to land a job in the forensics field, which provides her and her family with a livable wage job to continue thriving here in Tempe. So we're so grateful for those efforts. What you see here is a cross tab of the human impact. Now, you'll note at the bottom, this data is mixed data. It is representative of both duplicative service contacts, as well as unduplicated individuals. But we highlight this to touch point with some of the information that TCC will give you about how they go about funding categories and programs. They're looking across multiple programs. From the bottom, nonspecific populations. That is, anyone coming in off the street that accesses that service is open to families and individuals, all the way to programs that focus in on specific subpopulations like older adults or youth development. But all the programs are viewed through three lenses: crisis, stability, and self-sufficiency. So you can see that inside, for example, this cross hashed it in youth development, over 3,955 service contacts were made with youth who were in the midst of crisis. And these human impacts are the result of your investment. One of the other changes we have inside this report on this page is a way for you to view the investment that's been made into this system. This is an explorable funding matrix where you can go and look by subprogram. You can look by the funded priority. If you want to know crisis, stability, or self-sufficiency, those funded programs, you can drill down into this report. It highlights the $23.2 million that was invested in this system last year. We would like to announce that 67% of those dollars did come from the outside through federal funds, through grants, or through philanthropic donations. 1.2 million, as you'll see on the report, of that is distributed through the TCC Agency Review Process. I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Jaclyn, who can talk a little about the work of TCC and the Agency Review Process.
Thank you so much, Tim. Tempe City Council established a partnership with TCC in 1985 for the equitable distribution of funds to nonprofits providing necessary human services in Tempe. The Agency Review Process overseen by TCC's Community Impact Committee continues to successfully depoliticize the distribution of funds to this day. But what really makes Tempe and the Agency Review Process unique is the community-driven focus. In fiscal year 2021, 2022, a dedicated group of volunteers who live and/or work in Tempe provided over 1,100 hours of time and service. Due to the continued impact of COVID, the final recommendation meeting was successfully held virtually for a second year in a row. Additionally, Agency Review Volunteers, TCC Board members, and staff annually visit a third of partner agencies. For fiscal year 21, 22, this equated to 13 site visits. These visits focus on either newly funded agencies or sustained partnerships that have not received a site visit in the past three years. We recognize the generous commitment of the Agency Review Volunteers and hard work of TCC staff members. Thank you.
So through TCC's work with the Agency Review Process, as Jaclyn just outlined, we're able to allocate resources to programs that reported back on 96 total program outcomes, ensuring that the funding that you generously provided is targeting where we have the greatest impact. On this slide, you'll see an example of an organization's outcomes. So each organization within Agency Review receives a grant through the AR process, and they must propose two goals as part of their funding application. And these goals are the equivalent of outcomes. Each agency is provided, well, must provide quarterly reporting regarding their unduplicated outcome service numbers. In this example, Community Bridges provided stabilization through inpatient transition care, e.g., or for example, medical detox for people experiencing homelessness or people with low or no income. So Community Bridges, they requested $26,000. They were awarded a total of $14,533, and they were able to have an unduplicated 132 people reached. And the goals that they were able to accomplish, or the impact they were able to make, is 51% of the 402 people that they reached were able to complete their treatment protocol and transition to continuing care. So we see this as an example of long-term impact that our community partners can have. And so we'll continue to align our focus to support council priorities and look forward to continuing to work with our partners to make Tempe a healthier, more vibrant, and equitable community.
Behind every data point is a person, our friends and our neighbors. We must always seek to bring them numerous opportunities and events through which they can learn about and access help and support. After a two-year hiatus due to COVID-19, Care Fair 2022 was held in person on Tempe Human Services Day at the Tempe Community Complex. TCC, with the support of generous sponsors and in partnership with the Community Health and Human Services Department, the Office of Education, Career, and Family Services, along with 51 agency partners, hosted 275 attendees. TCC, CHHS, OECFS, and agency partners provided services, education, and volunteer opportunities to attendees. This event showcases our services in action.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Again, just thank you to TCC. The need in Tempe outstrips the ability of any one agency to provide a singular approach. So it's got to be done comprehensively with partners, and we sincerely appreciate that. Looking to the future, you saw a great example on that last slide of how we're able to drill down and highlight outcomes based on funding and success, based on projections and data. That's where we're looking to move our entire system. We are committed to enhancing our data collection and reporting approach. One example is what's on the slide is our weekly Homeless Solutions Update, which is, displays a series of key indicators with up-to-date information so that the local community can be able to drill in and see what's actually happening with their investment. This approach has been very well received, and it will serve as a blueprint and launching pad for all of our other internal programs as we begin to report out, not just on inputs and outputs and service contacts, but actual outcomes for our community. The idea is really being able to move toward a place where we have disaggregated data so we can put an eye toward equity of the impact that we're making. And we're also able to get focused attention on constant quality improvement. So I want to thank you again, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to be here to talk through this. The web, the URL for the address there, chhs-impact-report.temp.gov, for anyone following along that wants to drill into that report, is present. We are here for any questions that you may have.
Sounds good. Thank you so much for the presentation. Great work. Anyone on council have any comments or questions? Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I'd like to thank the volunteers. I've participated in the Agency Review Process, and it's hard. It's hard, and we have a lot of great community members participating, and I love that the community participates. So thank you for shepherding that process. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, Councilmember Chin. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Chin. I want to thank you all first and foremost, and the volunteers, of course, who take their time and effort to keep this process independent and keep it non-political. And it's a very important process in this city, and it's needed and does great work. Something I'd like us to look at in the future, and I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, but, you know, we have not adjusted the amount of funding Agency Review gets, I think, ever. Well, not ever, but it's been a long time. I think 2003 was the last time. So maybe we take a look at, you know, adjusting that for inflation since 2003, just moving along for maybe next fiscal year. It's something the council could, you know, I would hope, take a look at moving forward. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Hodge?
Yeah, I just want to say, echo my counterparts. Thank you so much for the work that you do, and thanks for, thank the volunteers also. And I would like to sit with you guys a little bit more because I'm newer to this process. So I would love to see how it's worked, the insides of it, because I've never seen it actually done before. So if you guys would like to invite me in, just to give me an idea of how it is. And I do agree with Councilmember Keating. I think we do need more funding, so that would be something that I would definitely support, too. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Councilmember Garland?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I, you know, echo what everybody else has already said. I love on page on slide seven, where it shows 2,100 volunteer hours. That is an awful lot of volunteer hours. So I just want to just say again, a big, huge thank you to the volunteers that participate in the programs for Agency Review. It's absolutely incredible what they are doing to make a difference in the lives of everybody in our community. I also want to say, I agree. I think we need to be looking at what we can do to structure more money into the funding. The need has gotten greater, and the funds have not followed that need. So I think it's also something we should be looking at. But I also want to, you know, beg our residents and our businesses in the city of Tempe to give that extra dollar on their water bill. That $1 will snowball into so many more dollars to make a big difference. But it takes, it takes all of us to take part in this. And when you see that on your water bill, I think it says Tempe Gives, I can't remember the name right off the top of my head right now, but it really does make a huge difference. And I think, you know, you can even go online and adjust that to say every, every month you want to give an additional $5 or $10, and that money goes directly to TCC. So I would really, really want to encourage people to take part in that program also. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodge?
You know, maybe we can do as council, maybe have like a contest to see if we can get as much people to help and pull up on that, you know, pushing it out there to make people pay more than just a dollar. Because I think most of the time, if they just knew about it, or even just easy to, easy access to do it, it's not going to make much of a difference if you're paying $67 or $68, but, or even go up to 70, round up. So I think that maybe us as council members can push that out there also, maybe with a contest to see how many people we can get to change over. You know, I'm competitional.
Yeah, absolutely. No, most definitely. I appreciate that. Last thing, I guess I'll say, too, is, you know, I definitely appreciate all the comments my colleagues have made about trying to bump up the funding. There is an increasing amount of need in our community in the greater Phoenix area for human services. I think one of the great things, though, that I really loved about this presentation and a lot of the work that I know our team is doing, is that we're able to show residents the impact that we're actually having. If we're able to use data to show people how the strategies and the programs and the people who are involved are changing the lives of some of the most vulnerable people in our community, that makes it a lot easier to have that competition, as Councilmember Hodge talked about, or to increase the funding to ensure that more people get access to the high-quality services that we provide here in the city of Tempe in partnership with our nonprofits. But I think the really critical piece of this as well is what you were able to just show us, because people then know, if I'm giving an extra $2, $3, $4, or $5, I know exactly where the money's going, and I know exactly what kind of impact we're going to have if I give that additional money. So I wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, item 4B, Fiscal Year 2023, 24 Budget Review Session and Acceleration Strategies. Also, along with initial recommended capital improvements program follow-up, and I see Tom Dunsing, our Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, and Mark Day, Municipal Budget Director, and Wydell Holmes, Interim Strategic Management and Innovation Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, good evening. Tom Dunsing, Deputy City Manager, joined here this evening or this afternoon by Mr. Mark Day, Municipal Budget Director, and Wydell Holmes, Interim Director of Strategic Management and Innovation Office. Tonight, we're pleased to present the recommended, the first look at the recommended budget for fiscal year 23, 24. And this is really the meeting where we bring both the capital budget and operating budget together, and that's in the materials you have with this item. If council remember, December 8, we went through a process to identify 15 priorities and then through the tool affectionately known as the Start Tool. And this helped frame the requests for additional funding or adjustments for departments included in this budget tonight. As you know, additional funds are requested through the Budget Supplemental Process. And again, we'd like to thank you for that guidance that we get. It is very valuable when we're putting this budget together. Few notable items. Budget discussions, we're no different here in Tempe as many other agencies. They typically revolve around the General Fund. That's the largest operating fund of the city. As typical, every year, the requests are greater than the needs we have available. And that's, that's important to remember that. And we help frame that when we go through and do the long-range forecast in November and February of each fiscal year. And departments, we work really hard together to prioritize and bring you the supplemental funding list that's included in your packet. Packet contains an extreme amount of information, memo summarizing the process, the recommended budget, the strategic and performance measures we've set for acceleration, the recommended and non-recommended supplemental listing for the General Fund, and summaries of the community input. And Mark Day will touch a little bit on the community input that we get. Mark and I will walk you through the operating and the capital budgets, and Wydell will walk you through the priorities that you have requested for us to do a hyper-focus on during the budget development process. The budget, when we come back for tentative adoption, that is the maximum amount that we, that we set for spending for the fiscal year. Between the tentative adoption and final adoption, and Mark will go through those dates, the total budget cannot increase. We can move some things around, but the total budget cannot increase. At the end of the presentation, we're certainly happy to take your input. Again, there's an awful lot of information that the budget staff has put together, and I would like to thank them. Of course, Mr. Day on my right, Lory Osikowski, Scott Gruber, Robbie Ashton, and Benicia Benson worked tirelessly through the end of last week to pull all this information together to get it agendized and before you tonight.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mark Day, Municipal Budget Director. Today's presentation, as well as our public-facing budget process in general, contribute to our goal of transparency in financial reporting and disclosure of information. That aligns to council priorities, strong community connections, and performance measure So as we mentioned, the budget is developed in a public process. On this slide, you can see the public meeting dates with the, on the left side is the capital budget, and then the right side is the operating. But those two come together tonight with the Budget Review Session. And then we have scheduled also on May 11th, if we need to, if there's any open items from tonight, we'll be back on May 11th. And then we have the formal adoption process as outlined in state statute with tentative adoption on June 1st, final adoption on June 15th, and then we'll be back on July 27th with the property tax levy adoption. So we coordinated with Communications and Marketing Office, as well as Neighborhood Services, to develop a public outreach plan. We had an online forum that was open from February 1st to March 6th, and I'll go over those results in a minute. We also participated in the MIAC Youth Resource Fair. We had a virtual and in-person forum on February 15th. And then we maintained a website with all the information about as we developed the budget. And we've also used various media, including Tempe Today, press releases, and social media. We also coordinated with Neighborhood Services to send out 7,000 postcards in February promoting the budget meetings to the residents in those areas of the city that indicated they were very dissatisfied in the latest residential survey with opportunities to provide input and feedback in the budget process. And the purpose of that was hopefully for those areas to encourage them to go out to the website, as well as participate in the budget process. So this is the results of the community online forum. We had 351 responses. The residents were asked two questions. The first is, how should the city invest in advancing the five council-adopted strategic priorities? And we've ranked those in order of importance. So you can see the first priority was quality of life, safe and secure communities, sustainable growth and development, financial stability and vitality, and then strong community connections. And then similar to your Start Tool, where you're given a theoretical $100, they were also given a theoretical $100 and asked to spend that among various programs and services aligned to the council priorities. And so based on the 351 responses, these were the top 10 programs and services that received the highest allocation of funds. And you can see the first priority is homeless services, crime prevention programs, and then you can see the, all 10 are there on the slide. So those were the top 10 based on the survey results. Also, I don't know if you noticed in your packet, the residents were provided an opportunity to provide their own comments, and so we've provided all those comments that were provided through the survey. We also reached out to the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission and asked them, we developed, the same survey, but it was on a different platform, same two questions. The first was, how should the city invest, same as for the community, in advancing its strategic priorities? This was the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission responses with sustainable growth and development as the first order of importance, quality of life, and then financial stability and vitality, safe and secure communities, and then strong community connections. And then they also had a theoretical $100, and this was the MIAC, the youth voice, if you will. Their top 10 responses with homeless services being the number one, and then all the way down, and then the 10th one would be financial stability of the city.
So Mayor and Council, the next few slides will focus on the operating budget, the operating side of the total budget, and then, and then the last few slides will focus on the capital side of the, of the budget, the recommended budget. Recommended operating budget's $725.4 million. This represents about a $59.6 million increase over the five, or over the prior year, which is about 8.9%. The budget includes provisions for employee compensation, including cost of living and market increases, consistent with MOUs, salary step and range movements, and other benefits, retirement system contributions, other post-employment benefits, contingency amounts in each of the funds for any unforeseen events or emergencies. The net supplemental budget request, and this is city-wide, is $14.5 million. We've got a slide that we'll, we'll drill down into that just a little bit. And finally, this budget is consistent with the long-range financial forecast that we presented back in February.
Okay, this slide is also the operating budget. It's for comparative purposes. It shows comparison between the current year adopted budget and what we're recommending for next fiscal year. And you can see the dollar amount change with, the dollar amounts expressed in millions of dollars. For most of the funds, the increases in the budget can be attributed to additions to the budget, as Tom mentioned, the supplementals, employee compensation increases, contrashal and supply increases like fuel and electricity. The 23 budget, or sorry, the 24 budget also includes $7 million in reappropriation for equipment and supplies that have been ordered but will not be received by June 30. So what we typically do in those scenarios is we've ordered the item, it's not going to be received, so the budget appropriation for those items is then moved forward to the next fiscal year.
So talk a little bit about the supplemental requests. This slide sort of summarizes the supplemental requests for each fund. We'll drill down a little bit in the General Fund, again, because that's the fund typically with the most discussion. Across all funds, we are looking at net, or requesting net supplemental budget increases totaling $14. totaling $14.5 million, and that equates to about 57, just 57.75 full-time FTEs and 35.9 part-time FTEs. The supplemental requests include operating requests and impacts of the operating budget from CIP projects. Perfect example of that is Clark Park Pool. Clark Park Pool, many years, went through the CIP process. It will be opening during the fiscal year, so there's an operating impact. That's included as a supplemental request. Again, it shows the supplemental requests by funds with a number of FTEs. And like the General Fund, that we typically size around the long-range forecast, the other funds, we size those supplemental requests around availability in the other funds. Spent just a minute on this slide, and you've seen this several times. This is our summary of our long-range forecast that we presented back in February 2023. I'll focus on the areas, all numbers are in thousands, so you'd have to add three zeros to the end of each of these numbers. Typically, what we use the long-range forecast for is we forecast what the revenues are going to be through, for the five years. We forecast what the expenditures are going to be, and those expenditures in that top area are really the expenditures to maintain our service levels. Finally, and where the most discussion takes place is around the estimated available new funding. That's where we come back and we determine how much can we afford with operating budget supplemental requests, and then one-time requests, either one-time operating requests or CIP pay-go. And again, this is the slide we talked about in February 2023. And I'd like to focus a little bit on that 23-24 column, because what we do is we set the stage with this forecast, and then we hone in on 23-24 to develop our budget. And what you can see there, the estimated available new funding for 23-24 is $5 million for recurring, $1 million for one-time, and $10 million for CIP pay-go. You add that together, that's $16 million available for available new funding. One thing I do want to call out as I get to this next slide is the operating impact of Clark Park Pools, roughly about $1 million, that's included in the expenditure line. So when we add that to the $16 million, we basically have $17 million in available supplemental funding.
Quick thing, I'm sorry. Sorry, Tom. I don't know who is ever online. Can you mute if you're not speaking, if you are online right now?
Okay, let's try again. Thank you, Mayor. So now I'm going to transition to the overall supplemental requests. As you recall, we had $16 million plus about $1 million. So that February, in the February 23rd forecast, we had about $16.9 million available. What we are recommending are total supplemental requests of $19.6, an additional $2.7 million above that $16.9 million. Can we do that? Yes. Are we comfortable with it? Yes. One of the things, and I'll flip back to this other slide, one of the things, that unassigned fund balance, we are well above our target levels. And so we feel comfortable, we have the financial capacity to be able to absorb that additional $2.7 million that we're requesting here tonight. And I'd also tell you that our bond rating agencies look at this information, and we were just rated AAA rating just this week from Fitch for this upcoming bond issue. We're waiting on S&amp;P. We'll know that next week. So, you know, congratulations. And that is due to exactly what we do here, is this good financial planning. So just really quick, the one-time request, that light blue box on the right, we basically had, you add those two numbers together, $11 million available, we're requesting $11 million. We moved a little bit of funding around from the CIP pay-go into the one-time supplementals, but when all said and done, we're right where we need to be. The recurring is where we exceed the amount that we identified in the forecast, the $2.7 million. But again, we're very comfortable with that. This does include Tempe Pre as a recurring budget supplemental. So in the event that we eventually approve that, that will be a recurring program. Highlights of the supplemental, just call out a few programs. Tempe Pre, net cost of $1.5 million, I think council knows that, it's been here a couple times. We are requesting approval of the Park Ranger Program, $2.2 million program with 14 FTEs. We also include annual ongoing river bottom cleanup at a cost of about 400, just south of $450,000 a year to maintain that river bottom. And as the slide says, there's a complete list of supplementals. It's quite lengthy, quite big, in the agenda packet and for your review.
So the recommended budget, in addition to the operating budget, includes the capital budget. So here's a summary of what we are recommending. It is $621 million for 23-24. That is a 35% increase over the current year, and I'll go over on the next slide some of those changes. Even though we adopt a five-year capital program, only the first year of the CIP is formally adopted into the budget each year. So here you can see the changes between the current-year adopted budget and the recommended budget for next year. A lot of the increases due to, same as on the operating side, is true on the capital side, reappropriation. So we've had a number of projects where we've had labor and supply chain issues. So we are re-appropriating $63 million from the current fiscal year to next fiscal year. Other changes include water and wastewater infrastructure improvements, the Scottsdale Road Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project in the Transit Fund, the Smith Innovation Hub Street improvements, the Fifth Street Streetscape Project, a non-congregate shelter and improvements in the City Hall Chilled Water Loop System. And at our last, at the March 23rd Work Study Session, there was one follow-up item related to the CIP. Council had requested that staff review the recommended funding and timing of the infrastructure improvements for the Smith Innovation Hub CIP project to see if that project could be accelerated. Staff had the design consultant review the project to determine if acceleration was possible. So they have determined that the north portion of the project from Rio Salado to University could be accelerated by six months with construction to start in the fall of 2023. So in order to accomplish that, we have moved $1 million in budget appropriation that was allotted in fiscal year 24-25. We've moved that forward to next fiscal year 23-24. The southern portion from University to Apache could not be accelerated and will continue as scheduled. And now I'm going to turn it over to Wydel Holmes to talk about the acceleration models.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good afternoon. Wydel Holmes, interim director of Strategic Management and Innovation Office. Backed with you today to finalize our proposed acceleration models for the council priorities that you identified as the 15 items of focus for staff during this next fiscal year. At the, excuse me, at our previous work-study sessions, we presented the CIP acceleration models. And tonight, I'd like to present to you the remaining seven performance measures out of the 15 that are related and most closely aligned to operating budget supplementals. Thank you, Mark. So just as a reminder, the acceleration strategies that we've put together with our team within departments is a little bit different than what we've seen in past fiscal years. We've really tried to, as part of our continuous improvement process, really looked at measurable strategies. So not the thematic areas of what we want to focus on, but what specifically are we focusing on, by when, who's going to be doing that? And that way, we have some measurable accountability, as well as being able to make any mid-year adjustments if we're not achieving that acceleration strategy. So by doing this, we're really able to create intention around the work, as well as provide our specific wins along the way, and then, like I said, always informing decision-making as we go through these strategies. So before I begin with the performance measure that was ranked as number eight in your Start Tool back in December, I'd like to first just thank the staff that have worked on all of these acceleration models. These are very much interdisciplinary approaches. We don't do this from one department standpoint. We really look at it across the city. And the collaboration that I've seen with our teams this year, and the leadership from each and every member on that team has been just wonderful as we start to continue to move Tempe to be performance-led when it comes to our budgeting process. These items here were arranged and organized by the performance measure owners within each of the departments, as well as their collaborators. And I would also like to just thank Adam Samuels from our office, who really helped shepherd that process this year. He's new to the city, and he's been here since August 8th, and so this was his first cycle with acceleration models. So really appreciate the work that he's done with that and the collaboration with all the department members. The eighth strategy, or the eighth performance measure that was identified for acceleration is quality pre-K enrollment. And really, as you know, with our pre-K enrollment is also based on our staff capacity. And so the acceleration models really are formulated around, in order to enroll to capacity, which we already are achieving our 45% goal, but to enroll all seats of 198 that are available for pre-K, it's about recruiting staff as well as retaining staff. And so the team has put together some strategies around those two elements, whether it's hosting education affairs to also providing onboarding support systems for new employees. So really, the main focus is onboarding staff and then retaining staff so that we're able to meet the staff-child ratio that we, that's ideal for Tempe Pre. And moving on to disability social inclusion, I'm particularly excited about this particular measure because it's been under development for a few years. When this idea first came about, it was really titled Above and Beyond ADA, meaning that inclusion for members of our communities, our visitors, and our staff is not just about the infrastructure that we comply with in regards to federal law. This is really about thinking about social inclusion for those with all abilities. And I'm excited about Dr. Hume's work that she has created an internal team, also with external partners, and they'll be focusing on creating metrics around five pillars. And those include a culture of inclusion, meaning are we always approaching our programs and services from the lens of the end user and not just looking at it, well, we've always done it this way, but are we really being equitable, inclusive of people with all abilities? Also, effective communication. The program access is one of the other key pillars. Safety and well-being, of course, and then self-sufficiency. And this team will be working on, by the end of this fiscal year, to actually have and identify the metrics associating with each of these pillars, so creating an index, if you will. Auditing and in regards to our program services, auditing in regards to program gaps is also part of the acceleration strategy for this year. And there's also a related supplemental request, just under $30,000. And that is to support the DEI program coordinator that is hired to work with on ADA programs and services from a part-time to a full-time position, basically 30 hours to 40 hours. The next performance measure I'd like to highlight is feeling of safety in your neighborhood. And this particular measure, there's two data points that I'd like to call out. The first one is the performance measure, where we do a poll survey monthly in regards to your feeling of safety in your neighborhood, and we'd like to reach at least an 80 on a scale of 100. We're currently at about, my eyes are bad here, about 72%. The other data point that we look at, too, is from our annual community survey in regards to your feeling of safety in your neighborhood, both day and at night. And so some of the strategies, again, interdisciplinary across departments, is increasing our community responders, who were just created this year, to their call-response rate of being 5% more than they were in the first initial months of initiation. Also, as Mark mentioned earlier, the re-initiating of our Park Ranger Program will be key to creating a feeling of safety in our neighborhood. Expanding crime prevention through environmental design from both RPD with the Neighborhood Watch and Crime-Free Multi-Housing, as well as a new position in community development that is also related to the Community Safety Strategic Plan, will also help propel these types of programs forward. And one of note is really about our alleys. We know that in our community survey, one of the lowest rates of satisfaction was feeling of safety at night if you lived near an alley. And so the Municipal Utilities Team has a novel way to measure alley quality, and so they're forming their solutions and strategies around alley remediation in order to move that score forward. So again, some measurable strategies on are we achieving that, that propels and advances other items regarding the performance measure. The website satisfaction performance measure was ranked number 11 in your Start Tool, and with the supplemental a little bit over $300,000. The focus of these strategies is really on analytics, user engagement, including focus groups, as well as adding features such as surveys and chat to our websites. There are three websites that really our team focuses on, so they'll be balancing strategies amongst what's best for each of those sites. A key piece of this is accessibility. And just a moment ago, I spoke to you about social disability, disability social inclusion. One of the key strategies here is to make sure that all of our photos and images on our websites all have accessibility tags so that it reaches all of our members and visitors to our websites. And then another element of the strategies is about quality control and assurance, and that's working with our websters, as well as kind of right-sizing the number of webpages that we have on all of our sites. So I'm really very excited about what the team has put together there. Again, that's going to affect every department and being led by our Communications and Marketing Office. The 12th performance measure, as far as order of ranking within the 15 priority, our performance measures ranked with the Start Tool, was high school graduation. And what's interesting about this is we are not a school district. However, we know that the city can influence with our programs and service graduations rate. And there are evidence-based studies show that when kids, you know, especially high schoolers, which I have one now, have future goals, that it helps propel the rate of graduation. And so the city influences that through our Career Ready Tempe Program, our FAFSA workshop campaigns, and then also one of the new strategies is College and Career Day Celebration Events. A key to this is they have not requested any supplemental funding. However, they are going to be pursuing at least three grants to sustain staffing and operations, as well as pursuing in-kind and volunteer resources for the programs and the strategies here. And on our next one is our employee turnover rate. This strategy is in regards to data that we have been looking at in regards to our employee turnover rate by department, by public safety, if sworn or civilian. And so the Human Resources Team has been working on strategies that relate to compensation reviews, also establishing a robust exit interview program, kind of like what's the root cause, right, that you need to look at. One of the most innovative things, I think, and this might lead the way in the valley, is crediting new employees for the service hours, for the service years that they have in the ASRS system. So that when an employee is moving from one ASRS-eligible organization over to Tempe, and we want their expertise and their experience, we're not starting them at the initial accrual rate for vacation. And this is innovative. This is what you would see a lot in the private sector, but I'm excited about Tempe moving in this direction of looking at the way we handle our benefits and our recruitment strategies for our employees. And then also continuing to leverage our employee development programs, tuition reimbursement and educational partnerships historically have been part of my heart and my career at the Tempe, here at Tempe. So very much looking forward to having those participation rates expanded for both of those programs, from first-time users to continued users of our educational partnerships. And then I think this is wrapping up the final performance measure that was identified for acceleration that we haven't spoken about yet is our Kids' Own Participation. Similarly to pre-K, strategies really evolve around, can we increase participation if we also have the resources available, which means staffing is key to that. Outreach and marketing to propel enrollment also helps with that, but really, the outreach that we need to staff, we're no different from other businesses here nationally, but being able to staff these programs with full-capacity staffing so that we can maximize the number of students that can participate, and also not only maintain the state-required ratio, but to exceed those ratios because Tempe always offers quality programs. Again, we always go above and beyond. Again, we always go above and beyond. Flexible schedules, professional development opportunities are key to that, but then also recruitment strategies such as utilizing social media will also help with recruitment and retention of staff. And again, for this particular performance measure, there are no supplemental requests in the budget this year. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Tom and Mark and Council and Mayor.
Thanks, Wydell. And Mayor, before we open up questions, departments are here prepared to answer questions. As you can imagine, this is a tremendous amount of information, a tremendous amount of coordination. Every single department's, every single department has their fingers in this. This gentleman to my right is the one that synthesizes this, makes it understandable. He is the best in the business. And so, you know, he's going to hate me for saying that, but he really is the best, and we are really blessed in Tempe to have him working for us. So with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions.
Thank you so much. I think we're blessed to have all three of you working for us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Keating.
I was going to say that, Mayor. You got me. You got me. You know, I'm always impressed with the Budget Office and how you guys are able to capture the council's priorities so well and distill it down to easily digestible information for us because dollars and cents can often be very confusing, especially when we're looking at year-over-year and how you managed to align all seven of our priorities and come up with some sort of consensus. So as always, great work on that. I have a question about pre-K. So when you say it's recurring supplemental, does that mean that without council action, it'll continue to be funded at that current level into perpetuity?
Mayor, Councilmember Keating, that's actually a very good question. It is, it will be included in that expenditure section of the long-range forecast, so it won't go through the supplemental process. It, for lack of a better term, lived in the supplemental process. It was a long, long, long pilot program. It's no longer a long, long, long pilot program. It's in the, it's in that section. Council does have to adopt a budget every year, so every year it will be on the, on the table, but it will be with all the other programs.
So it grew up and moved out of, moved out of its parents' house and now is skyscraper in downtown Tempe, going to school and all. Okay, that's great. No, I'm really excited to hear that. So essentially, the program has been made permanent as long as there's our budget constraints in the future that, you know, cause us to have to make some difficult decisions. So I'm very happy to hear that. Obviously, I know Councilmember Hodge and I are still committed to expanding that program where we can, but I'm thrilled that finally, geez, what is it, six years later, you know, we, it has a, it has a home in the budget. So thank you very much for hearing the council on that, and I do really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions and also along with Councilmember Keating, I just think it's amazing what you guys are able to do to take this down to bite-sized pieces so it's a little bit easier for us to understand and our residents to be able to just understand and go through this. I had, one of the things that I was, I'm looking on when we were looking at the budget is the HERF funding, those four positions that we have under HERF funding. Do we have to be concerned with that, about the financing at the legislature getting money? Is that something, for this next year that we get funding, what's it going to look like to be funding that afterwards?
Mayor, Councilmember Garland, we have, we do long-range forecasting, not just for the general fund, but for the HERF fund. We've taken into account projected HERF revenues, including a slight decrease in the project for next year in HERF revenue, but adding these positions still keeps the fund healthy and it's projected to stay within fund balance.
Okay, great, thank you. The other one is, I wasn't sure exactly where I should be looking, and I was trying to go through this a few times. Where we be looking at funding for our water main breaks and are we padding that? Because it seems quite frequently that we are getting a council communicator from the department to tell us that there's a water main break. So we know that it's happening, we know it's going to be happening more. Are we padding extra money into that with the expectation that our city's going to be needing that?
Mayor, Members of Council, I can hit that from a high level. What has gotten better is the communication on water breaks. What has gotten lower is the actual water breaks themselves. It's a, it's a normal part. It's not a fun part, but it's a normal part of operating a water utility. We do have breaks. There is a tremendous amount of funding in the CIP to maintain that system, and they go about it pretty scientifically, but, but we have actually gotten a lot better at communicating that to Mayor and Council, just to, just to keep you informed of what's going on.
Okay, great. And one last question regarding this. So under the budget in the red area, I had to kind of laugh. I have been an administrative assistant before and a secretary before in my lifetime. I've had to use copiers and copy machines and understand the dependency on and the importance of a machine like that, especially now on third floor, when one of ours goes down, I just go about crazy. So I'm looking at in the red, we have $7,500 for a new copier for our city attorney's office. I just thought that that was kind of funny because that's a very necessary piece of equipment. I'm not sure the history of that, but it just seems like there's got to be a way we can move $7,500 over and get a copy machine that's a necessary piece of equipment.
Yeah, Mayor, Members of Council, we can take that back. And if we identify savings this year, I'm pretty certain we could, we could execute a new copier in the city attorney's office this year. We'll also work with Mr. Matherson and Sonia Blaine to determine the need, to make sure they're properly outfitted. That's a good question.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And then, you know, just with our, I guess, our speakers that came in and talked to us about funding, accelerating funding, and really looking at shade structures, I would really like to know what we are going to be doing moving forward to be putting more money into that. I know at one time, and I think just before I got on council, there was an acceleration of the Urban Forest Master Plan. Is that, was that something that we've already then considered and are already planning for? And that's my last question, Mayor. Thank you.
Do you got that? Do you got that?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Councilman, as far as, so we went back and looked at the funding. So for the urban forest, since 2122, we've added 1.2 million in operating, and the CIP has increased roughly about four years ago from a half million, we're up to $2 million over the five years. We also went and looked at the shade and green stormwater infrastructure, CIP, and that is, we have programmed in $3 million over five years for that program.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Hodge?
You know, Councilmember Garland, you need to stop asking my questions because that was my question about the stormwater. So thank you. You are 2,000 miles away or wherever you at, and you're still taking my questions from me.
Sorry, hon.
Okay. No, that was one of my questions. My other one has to kind of do with Councilmember Keating was talking about with pre-K. I thank you, for one thing, I'm very happy with that. But if it starts to expand, because I know they're talking about adding more Head Start classes, more preschool, what will happen with funding if we need to add more into it? Because we are, seem like we're receiving more kids, and as I just went on a tour with them, they were talking about, you know, adding Head Start and extra classrooms in there. I know it's preset to what we have right now, but what will happen if we do continue to see an increase in children and in the need?
Sure. Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Hodge, thank you. We look at available funding every year, and it very simply comes down to affordability. What's available in recurring general fund funding? Every year, we could look at this, we could bring it back to council. I do recommend that you look at all supplemental requests together. That's probably the best way for council to make really good, informed decisions versus one at a time. And, and again, we can, we can look at this every single year, and if it's a council priority, we'll certainly take it back to the department. We'll wash it through the budget supplemental process and bring back a recommended budget.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Anyone else in council, additional comments, questions?
Thank you for a great presentation, and it was just an easy, easy, easy listen-to, an easy way to follow along. So thank you so much for making it. For a common man like myself to follow it, thank you so much.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. The one quick thing I was going to ask, first of all, I really appreciate everything that's been set up here already by my colleagues and wanted to say, too, I'm glad to see that the sustainability priorities are going to stay sort of in that acceleration column, which makes me very, very happy. The one thing I was going to ask, and I know we're adding a lot more money to this, but a lot of our roads, in terms of the CIP, it's one of the most common things I hear about when I'm walking a lot of neighborhoods, is people will say to me, you know, what are we, you've done a great job on like a lot of the major arterials like Warner Road, you know, brand-new, smooth asphalt, but one of the issues that a lot of our residents have brought up are the roads in their neighborhoods specifically. And I guess just trying to find out kind of, you know, what we're doing on that front. I believe, the number in my head is something like $60 million over the next five years that's being allocated for the purpose of accelerating street and road improvement, but I just wanted to make sure that that number was correct. And if there's any possible way that either this year or in future years, there can be even a little bit of more money put towards that. It's not, clearly not the sexiest thing in the world, but it is one of those things as I kind of walk around in some of our neighborhoods and I look down, I go, yeah, I can see why people are concerned about this.
So Mayor and Council, the current five-year CIP has $76 million in it over five years for two projects, minor pavement preservation and roadway mill and overlay, which is, you know, obviously, street repairs and repavement. The recommended CIP increases that, so from 76 million to 82.5 million. So we've added quite a bit of funding for that program. With, the department has a strategy to increase residential work by 6% to help the pavement quality in the neighborhoods.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, Mayor, thanks. No, that was a great question, Mayor. My other question is with inflation, with cost of supply and materials, are we forecasting those things as we go five years down the road? Is that something we consider with not just streets and roads, which I'm glad we brought that up, but also stormwater improvements and maybe some of the tree mitigations we're trying to do with creating more, capture more stormwaters for those trees in certain areas?
Yeah, Mayor and Members of Council, Councilmember Navarro, thanks for bringing that up. Inflation's real. Inflation is impacting our projects. Inflation affects the ability to deliver projects. Luckily, so far, we've been able to manage inflationary increases, and that's the exact reason why you saw the additional CIP Pago out of the general fund, is to kind of hedge against that inflation. Sort of the news we've been getting is it's, we think it's the, it's not going to be as bad as a situation as it has been. It's not going up as fast. Is it, we haven't seen it come down, and Engineering and Transportation Director Shelley Seiler can probably talk better than I can about this, but we have indications that it's, it's kind of leveled off, I guess is probably the best way to say it. But in this budget, we're able to manage it. We do this budget every year for exactly that reason. If we see costs going up, departments will be requesting more, and if that causes other less priority projects to be deferred or reduced or eliminated, we will bring that back to council. But so far, we've been able to manage it.
Okay. Sounds good, okay. Anyone else, any further comments or questions? All righty. Hearing none. Thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Great job.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome back to the Tempe City Council Work Study Session. First up here, we're going to go to item number 4C, which is the Parks and Recreation Equity Study. And let's see, I see Sean Wagner, Deputy Community Services Director, Aaron Kirkpatrick, Community Services Manager, and Mercedes Payne, Community Services Manager, for a presentation on item 4C. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
I see, I see Sean, you're sporting the latest in Parks and Recreation attire this evening.
Yeah, Parks and Recreation gear.
Got to show off the shirt a little bit. Look at that.
Yeah, we do. It's our Making Space shirt, Equity in Parks and Recreation. There's probably a little happy up on your desk sometime in the near future.
We live and wear our values here in the city of Tempe, everyone watching at home.
Appreciate it, Mayor, Council. Thank you for allowing us to come before you tonight and provide you an update on the Parks and Recreation Equity Study. Tonight with me are Mercedes Payne and Aaron Kirkpatrick. And again, we're going to talk to you a little bit about tonight about Making Space, an equity study for Parks and Recreation, really on a tagline here, "Just Play For All." So this initiative of this, from the project statement to the initiative, is one of those significant initiatives that we had in our 2021 Parks and Recreation Master Plan Update. City staff, since last June, have been working with our Lead Consultant Design Workshop to really get an innovative and inclusive equity study for the Parks and Recreation Division. So like our national organization, the National Recreation and Parks Association, we both actively support and are committed to equity, placing equity at the center of our programs and services. And in doing so, we recognize that there are four pillars. The first of which is recognizing the systematic inequalities that have been created through various different, through various different lived experiences. Secondly, we want to strengthen our organizational culture and practices while centering them around equity, diversity, and inclusion. Third, we want to build that equity, inclusion, and diversity into how we prepare for the future, which is really where this plan is focusing in on. And then lastly, we want to make sure our outcomes, those strategic outcomes, they are centered, they're equity-centered, so that we dismantle any of those barriers that have been created. So Parks and Recreation, we feel that we are poised to respond, embrace, and celebrate with our community by meeting them where they are at. Parks and Recreation is especially essential for communities that have been underserved. So tonight, Mercedes and Aaron, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Come a little closer. Thank you, Sean. Within our Community Service Department, there are several priorities and strategies that we are responsible for. For this particular study, it's designed around two strategies and three performance measures. Safe and Secure Communities, 1.23, and Quality of Life, 3.16 and 3.17. From previous initiatives such as our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Equity Action Plan, and the Right to Reap Analysis, this study plans to build upon those plans and analysis to address the gaps in our facilities and parks and the barriers with accessibility, programming, diversity in our staffing and services. Chief Diversity Officer Dr. Humes and Officer Diversity Equity Inclusion continues to be supportive with our efforts and a great resource as we develop this study.
Thank you, Mercedes. So why now? Why this approach? As the makeup of our city becomes more diverse and development more dense, our Parks and Recreation system will need to be resilient and creative in order to serve and accommodate community members with a multitude of backgrounds in all of our spaces and places. The COVID-19 pandemic taught us just how important our Parks and Recreation spaces are in promoting health, safety, and community connections. As we learned with the recent park and street renaming process, we're uniquely poised in this moment to acknowledge and address historic issues of injustice that might have occurred across our city. As we move towards substantial completion of the goals of our initial Parks Capital Improvement Program, bringing each park up to a baseline of condition and safety, we also need to make sure that any expansions and new improvements are planned with an eye to equity. This study has had an aggressive schedule that reflects the urgency of our mission. We kicked off over the summer of 2022 with initial conversations between the project committee and our Consultant Design Workshop. The orange circles here represent engagement opportunities, including presentations, focus groups, forums, special events, and meetings. The general cadence of the project has had us checking in with our technical advisory committee, made up of experts citywide and members of our board, at each point after an engagement opportunity. At each phase, we've moved from analysis of historical trends in city land use, the distribution of parks and community centers, to identifying barriers to access, identifying gaps in service, and into an assessment of distribution priorities, practices, policies, and programs in their current form. Currently, we're working to start to begin to craft recommendations that are grounded in community feedback in order to be able to implement measurable actions. Currently, we're right where we hope to be in our schedule, in the midst of a comprehensive community engagement effort and drafting those implementation strategies. So we'd like to share our results so far. This is just a teaser. But at the root, this study seeks to remove barriers for all people wanting to engage with Parks and Recreation in Tempe. Our methodology for this work, therefore, has been to center the voices and the needs of our most vulnerable and marginalized community members, recognizing that what benefits those with the highest need will benefit all. Our equity zones highlight areas where, based on a composite of census data, CDC's social vulnerability indices, crime data, and our own verified encampment data, we can expect that people are experiencing higher levels of vulnerability. Our walk shed analysis identifies barriers to safe access to Our walk shed analysis identifies barriers to safe access to facilities and uses the street network and trails to identify residential areas within the city that can and cannot access parks within half a mile. We've mapped our park program participant data to find out who's served currently by each of our community centers and who might need more targeted messaging in order to join our programs or increased access. We've also performed park and facility assessments with an equity lens, looking at not just what the park is like, but how it feels to be in our spaces and how they reflect the local community. We've also compiled our investment data to analyze whether we have been investing in particular areas more than others. Our GIS analysts and city planners have been instrumental in helping to wade through and refine all of this data.
Our engagement framework. Our engagement consists of our internal and external resources and subject experts across city departments in our Tempe community. Who is a part of this framework? Our Tempe Advisory Committee, which includes the Office of Diversity Equity Inclusion, Sustainability Office, Community Services, our GIS Services, Community Development, which is Neighborhood Services and Planning, Communications, and Marketing Office, Human Services, Engineering, and Transportation. Also representations from our Parks Recreation Golf Double Butte and Cemetery Advisory Board, our Parks and Recreation Project Team, employing staff on all levels, our Tempe residents, our community stakeholders, and community partners. Our Community Navigator Program. Our Community Navigator Program is a paid opportunity for Tempe residents and stakeholders to engage with the community in the Parks and Recreation Equity Study. Our navigators are selected based on their experiences representing and are providing services to Tempe's underserved demographic groups that were identified in the Equity Action Plan. The focus of the navigators is to assist with data collection, public outreach, and neighborhood engagement. The navigator's engagement is like the heart and soul of this study. They are connecting people and communities by giving them the opportunity to be heard. They're building relationships in the community. They're getting a community involved. They know community engagement creates community leaders. Currently, our navigators have surveyed over 40 Parks and Recreation facilities and submitted over 400 park and facility assessments, conducting intercept interviews with community members, also gathered quantitative and qualitative data through a diversity equity inclusion assessment workbook. And here you can see on the slide to the right is one of the pages from those assessment workbooks that the community navigators use to assess our parks. And then here on the left is one of our navigators, Joe Childs, with our own Mayor Corey Woods, and at one of our pop-up events engaging in conversation regarding the equity study. Our employees. Our Subconsultant Erica Maxwell of AHA Alliance Awareness Honor Action Alliance hosted employee-focused groups for full-time, part-time, contracted, and our seasonal parks and recreation employees. A wide variety of locations and times were offered to accommodate all work schedules, as well as being a paid opportunity for employees who participated. The group's focused on how our division recruits, trains, manages, and retains employees to ensure diversity, equity, inclusion is practiced, and that staff represents the community we serve.
So currently, we're moving from engagement with our community services staff into engagement with the city as a whole and our overall community. Our survey kicked off this past Saturday, and our virtual public meetings were held on Monday. One is recorded and up for review on the project website. Our re-envisioned public meetings of sorts will be on May 10th at Escalante, which sits tight in one of our highest equity zone priority areas. The Making Space Festival is designed to promote participation in the public process and to direct people to the community survey while also illustrating some of the things that this study might result in in terms of community partnerships and changes to our Parks and Recreation spaces. It's also just going to be a lot of fun. And that's it for our update. If you have any questions, we hope to see you out and about at all of our outreach events. I know we've run into, our community navigators have seen many of you already, and we look forward to your support and involvement as we move towards updating all of you on the results of the analysis when we bring this final draft of the study for your review and adoption in early fall.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Really appreciate the presentation. Anyone from council, any comments or questions on this item?
Thank you.
Looks like none. Wonderful. Great job. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Next item, 4D, Tempe Tomorrow, General Plan 2050, which is an update on the plan development process and review of the draft plan document. I see Jeff Tamilevich and Ambika Adikari, as well as Shawna Warner coming to the table.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Jeff Tamilevich, Community Development Director. Community Development is here today to provide you with an update on Tempe Tomorrow, General Plan 2050, and will be soliciting your input and guidance. The team, under the leadership of Deputy Director Ryan Levecq, excuse me, Principal Planner Ambika Adikari, Planner Jacob Payne, Neighborhood Services Manager Shawna Warner, and Neighborhood Services Specialist Brenna Clark, have worked relentlessly since the beginning of 2022 in an effort to create the document that reflects the community's vision for the future. Today, the staff is going to speak at a very high level, discussing the steps that have taken, that have been taken so far, including the outreach and meetings that have taken place, the content of the general plan, all the elements and chapters that are involved, as well as the explanation and the land use for the density maps. At this time, I'd like to hand it over to Principal Planner Ambika Adikari.
Thank you so much, Jeff. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So this presentation would be by myself, Shawna Warner, and Jacob Payne. And we appreciate the time for the presentation. We'll be talking about very briefly what is the general plan. There are a couple of new members in the council, but we'll be very brief on that one. Then we'll talk about how this plan is being developed, the process of it, and then what we've heard so far, the outreach section that Shawna will describe. And then we'll talk about what's included in the draft plan, a copy of that. You have a document like this, 373 pages. And at the end, we will seek your guidance and input into the draft. This is, you don't have to read this. This is the two-year-long kind of graphic. We came to you in March 2022 to get the public involvement plan for the general plan adopted. And then we kicked off, and then we had basically all these hearing and listening sessions for the development of the plan that we've been continuing on. And at this point, we are in the process of a preliminary draft, and we'll be having a draft that will be released in May, that I'll go into a little more detail about that. And then obviously, we have the adoption process, going to the Development Review Commission, coming back to the council, and then eventually, next year in 2024, March, go to the borders. Now, what will it cover? What are the main ingredients of the plan? This is something that's pretty well-known to everyone. It's something like a constitution of the city in terms of the growth and the development. It is an overarching policy document that really guides anything that we do. It is community-driven. It reflects what the community wants in terms of the coming 30 years horizon, in terms of development and growth. And then obviously, it takes into account any projection that municipal association of the government or the census make for the city for the coming 30 years and how we plan wise accommodate those kind of growth in the city. And then obviously, many elements like land use, infrastructure, economic development, historic preservation, all of those in a very high level are accounted for in the plan. It is a vision. It's more of a philosophical document. It's sometimes by design a little more flexible so that we can have a direction, but we can go into a little more detail later on during the master plan and the specific plans. Here is a simplified diagram that the general plan will inform the infrastructure plans like the transportation and water resources master plans, and then many high-level plans that we do, the character area plans, forestry master plan, climate action plan. Lot of things are kind of based on the vision of the general plan. Then there are many implementist plans that we create that again are guided by the master plan, things like redevelopment plans, Smith-Hub development plans. And finally, the implementist and regulatory mechanism, like the city code, the transportation and engineering standards, and the transportation overlay district, city code, and the zoning and development code. Although this is like a simplified diagram, many of these master plans are also feeding into the general plan, so they're kind of interlocked in many occasions. How is it being developed? It is community-driven. We do use the previous plan of 2040 right now that was adopted in 2013, and that was voted and ratified in 2014. That was a 30-year horizon, so many things are timeless. Many things are still okay. When we went to the public, the public said, hey, some of these things look good because they were designed for 2040, they're good for 2050 also. So there's a level of comfort, maybe about 40% or 50% of the document is something that we already have agreed upon before that was adopted and that's voted upon. Then we use what the community said in terms of what had changed in the last 10 years. There are many planning trends internationally and nationally, things like the micro-mobility, things like climate change, the extreme heat, many things have come along. We take that into account. And then there are updates from the staff in many different departments. Many things have changed. Smith-Hub, Maker District, a number of things that we've done, the Park and Recreation Master Plan, Historic Preservation Plan, all of them also get fed into designing of this general plan. Then the community and the commission and the council input that we hear from many different ways that Shawna will describe a little more into detail. We do have a council-appointed, time-bound, dedicated commission, which is called the Community Working Group, specifically for the general plan. We listen to them, they give us a guidance, and we have a technical advisory group, which is very large, that constitutes all the different departments, all the 15, 16 departments, the representative from the commissions and boards, and then also our partners like ASU and Tempe Chamber of Commerce, DTA, MAG, and so on. And we also hold many other meetings that we'll go into a little more detail. So all of that feed into the system of developing into the plan. So what we've heard so far, Shawna Warner will walk us through that.
Thank you. As Ambika noted, we have been engaging with the community over the past year in a variety of ways, with multiple opportunities for them to contribute ideas and provide feedback through all of our phases of the process. Throughout the course of the plan development, we've conducted four different surveys and held numerous meetings totaling around 2,500 unique points of contact. Just to share one example, in order to set a creative and positive tone for the project, we kicked off our process at Legoland with a hands-on engagement that drew over 150 participants. This generated meaningful and useful input and really brought in some new faces and a more diverse audience than a typical meeting. And then we've also been out and about and joined our Tempe community at many different events, some of those hosted by our neighbors and others hosted by the city in order to engage with a variety of audiences. And one of the more successful partnerships to gather input was with our community arts team, where we engaged through our community, with our community through an art activity at seven different arts in the parks that took place throughout Tempe. And this engagement really helped us hear from a variety of ages and receive a large number of comments and ideas for the plan. And then we also held a number of focus groups. We talked to our nonprofit partners, we met with our business community, we met at Apache AS Trails with the help of our ASL interpreters, and we partnered with Peer Solutions to survey students at Tempe High Schools during lunch breaks, as well as an online survey. And Ambika has already provided an overview of Community Working Group, but we do want to acknowledge all of the time that those volunteers put in in order to review and really give detailed input into all of the chapters that make up the plan. And then that work was also complemented by the work of our technical advisory group. And then they also spent a great deal of their time looking through all of the chapters and really giving detailed input in what that might look like.
Thank you, Shawna. Yeah, I will. I just wanted to revisit what Shawna just talked about, the Community Working Group. Just wanted to let you know that it does represent all the zip codes and as much as possible, all the character areas. There are a couple of character areas where there actually no people. It's mostly industrial. And then also, it represents the business community, the residents, ASU, and nonprofits, and so on. So it's a very representative commission that the board and the council and the mayor has appointed, and they have been guiding us throughout. We actually had held 12 meetings already with two extra meetings. We held monthly meetings, and they gave us a guidance on that basis. Now, what Shawna described, the very active community involvement, something like 2,500 different contact points in terms of individuals through surveys, when we actually go to the meeting, when we listen to the people by email, when you talk to people on the phone, all of that, they give us a lot of input. We have created a matrix of many things that people have told us, but many things are very common. Even in the previous agenda, we heard about certain things like shade and equity and landscape and so on. And here are also some of the themes that across the board, when we go to the people, people do talk about they want access and proximity from their residents to amenities. There is a mix of housing that they would like. There's also a new concept called the Blue Zones, which is like more healthy regions like Okinawa and some of the Saratino in Italy, where the environment is better, where there's greenery, where there are parks, and people feel much more healthy and active and outdoors. Some of those concepts also came through. People like the desert plants. There's also a question about the new emerging technologies like the drone technology. Obviously, when you go forward in terms of technology, people also want to go backward and preserve the historic preservation. Local agriculture, food, nature, public arts, renewable energy, a lot of ideas are very common, whichever group that we go to. And these are something that we have taken very seriously and have embedded them into the draft of the plan. Now, what's included in the plan? I just wanted to give you an overview. Like I said, there's a 373-page document draft that you had a chance to look at it. It's very preliminary. As we speak, we're still working on it. It will be released on May 5th. But the plan will be kind of inspired by initially the native land acknowledgement statement, which is put into the plan in words, in a full page, and also a full form. And then it consists of seven different chapters, including appendices. And the chapters are introduction and many different other chapters that are kind of put together with the elements that the state actually requires us to address for the city of our size. And those seven chapters include 20 Arizona mandated elements. So Arizona State requires certain things that we do describe and we do deal in terms of the policies and strategy in the general plan. But Tempe, because of our values in certain other areas, we also have six additional elements, like historic preservation, climate change and resilience, cultural amenities. Some of those things may not be exactly required in that terminology by the state, but we put that because that's something that we value very strongly. That's the cover page of the document. So the first chapter will be introduction with plan overview and how the amendment of the plan is processed. The second chapter would be land use and development chapter, and it has elements. Anything that you see within Estheric are the chapters that are required by the Arizona statute, and so it'll include, for example, the land use, community design, neighborhood preservation revitalization, redevelopment, and housing. The other chapter is the economic development chapter, and it has three elements. Two elements are required, and one element, we put it in because economic development is very important for us. As a matter of fact, there are more jobs in Tempe than the residents, so that's something that we include in the general plan goals and guidelines. The other chapter is circulation chapter. Ours is one of the few series which has a really multimodal transportation and housing kind of overlap to each other. So the circulation chapter includes pedestrian and bikeways, transit, which is very important, travelways, those are the streets, parking and access management, and aviation because of the proximity of the Sky Harbor Airport. Sustainability and resilience chapter used to be called the conservation chapter. Now there's a new name. That's what the Department of Sustainability and Resilience suggested. That's the name of the department also. It will have conservation, land element, environmental planning, water resources, climate change, and extreme heat. Actually, the land would be named slightly differently in terms of remediation. And then there is open space and recreation. We just heard about the equity in the Parks and Plan, and this is something that's very heavily involved into the plan. There's an open space element, there's a recreation element. There's an open space element. There's a recreation element. There's a cultural amenities element. The public facilities and services chapter elements, this is the last chapter. It has public building and facilities, public services, municipal code, and safety. And then finally, the appendices. Many people do not read the whole general plan, but some people do, and some people want to do even more. So we're providing about 73 pages of the appendices, where if people want to go into a little more detail of how the data and how some of the graphics and some of the analysis is done, there's a detail in the appendices that provides a lot more background. And those are not the goals and policies, but those are kind of important in terms of the document because this document is long-lasting. It lasts 10 years. So we want to provide a very comprehensive documentation to that. Now, land use map is a very important element of the general plan, and Jacob will very briefly describe the land use maps.
Thank you, Ambika. So as Ambika mentioned, the state requires that the city of Tempe have a land use element, and also requires that that land use element go into details about land use designation and residential density. So this is accomplished through a map that depicts in 30 years what is kind of expected of land use or what's desired in order for us to be able to meet projections of population and employment, looking at 2050. The general plan land use designation is not going to change zoning on site, but when rezoning applications come in in the future, the land use designation of a general plan is used for a basis of judging whether or not it's an appropriate rezoning application. So in the current general plan that we use, General Plan 2040, land use and residential densities were shown on two separate maps. So shown here on the left side is the land use map from General Plan 2040. That's where you see things like residential, commercial, industrial, and mixed use. The residential density map on the right side is where it goes into a breakdown of the allowed amount of dwelling units per acre. So there's a range from down to three and below dwelling units per acre, and then things like multifamily, where you're looking at up to 45 dwelling units per acre. And our highest designation of the urban core, which is 65 dwelling units per acre and over. So moving forward for this plan, the Tempe Tomorrow General 2050, we are going to be combining these two maps into one map. We're doing this, it's a convention that's very common among other cities in the valley. I believe that Tempe is the only one that had two maps to accomplish land use designation. So having one map will be for easier interpretation, easier reading of what is depicted on a specific site, and ultimately, if there is an amendment, that would also become an easier process as it's not changing two separate maps. So shown here on this slide is what the 2040 maps would look like had they been combined. So in doing so, we had to come up with new land use designations that integrate the density and the land use. So there are the residential designations, which span from cultural resource, which is a designation that was created back in 2003 over some post-war neighborhoods that limit density to what is allowed by zoning. And then there are two single-family land use designations that range from less than three dwelling units per acre up to the traditional single-family 600-square-foot lot size, or 6,000-square-foot lot size, which is up to nine dwelling units per acre. And then there are the two multifamily categories, also broken down by density allowed per acre. Moving then there on the five mixed-use categories. So the first three are just the standard mixed-use, where we look to see a combination of residential and commercial users. And then they're broken down by the density that's allowed. And then those last two mixed-use categories are the mixed-use industrial categories, which were created for the General Plan 2040 back when the Maker District and Smith Innovation Hubs were designated. So that's where we're looking at mixed-use, where there is a combination of residential, commercial, and perhaps light industrial users, like maker spaces and artisan-type things. So there's two of those designations, also broken down by densities allowed. And then the remaining land use designations are directly correlating to what was on the 2040 land use map. So there's industrial, commercial, civic, educational, open space, and then the recreation and cultural. So this is a look at the currently proposed residential density and land use map that's in the preliminary draft plan that is in the packet. So this version of it shows the areas outlined in black. Those are identified as the changes. So this map was made as a synthesis of the current 2040 map, and then a combination of that with the projections of population and employment that we received from the Maricopa Association of Governments, from the Census Bureau, and then through community feedback. We had a survey that was specific to land use designations for this plan. So we had come up with three alternatives that we let residents choose and let us know what about it they like, or what they want to see change in the future of land use in Tempe. So this alternative was the recipient of over 60% of the vote. So it was a majority of the people who participated in the survey seemed to favor this option. The changes in this land use plan from the 2040 plan, there's a focus on increased mixed-use and higher density in the area east of ASU and along the Apache Corridor, a focus on increased neighborhood-scale mixed-use on arterial streets where maybe older commercial centers are, and then a focus on mixed-use and regional commercial centers as well, such as the Arizona Mills and the Emerald Center. And with that, I'll give it back to Ambika.
Thank you, Jacob. So before we go to the next step, I just wanted to give you a very brief summary of what we discussed, all three of us, and also wanted to kind of reaffirm that the keeper of the plan is the Community Development Department, but it is a collaborative, it's a really mega collaboration between all the departments. Something like 52 people have worked on the sharepoint in the document. And although on the day-to-day basis, myself, Jacob, Shawna, Brenda, and Ryan work on it, but we work under the leadership and guidance from Jeff and also Ryan. But all the other departments, we're very thankful to them because, you know, it's really something that they have really contributed and given us all the input on that one. So the two-year project is starting from March 2022, hopefully ending in March 2024. It's a long project. And the development outreach, once again, just wanted to let you know that there was a really, a number of data points. The survey alone was participated by 976 responses, and there's one more that is coming, which will be at least a couple hundred more people. And then the individual meetings that we held had 1,216 attendees and contacts, including the Art in the Park Master Plan. And then the total data points, like I said, was more than 2,500 people. And the, some of the things that we have actually, when I showed you what people have said, we had to balance because sometimes people, there are some people who will say that make everything mixed-use, and some people will say eliminate the single-family homes. And we kind of addressed all of them and tried to balance it. We have put a lot of the timeless goals from the 2040 plan intact, but we have, like, the density that you talked about are near the transit routes and near downtown and in the hubs. And obviously, more mixed-use compared to before because we had to accommodate more people. We're working with the MAG data right now that has a projection of something like 52,000 more people between now and 2050. So the plan should kind of think of accommodating that. And also, there's also going to be housing unit increase of something like 15,000 more units between now and 2050. These are preliminary projections by the MAG, but this is something that we've been working on. And before it goes to adoption, we'll update it to whatever numbers that we get from MAG at that point. And then also, there are more people who work in Tempe than who live in Tempe. And then the MAG projects that by 2050, there will be a gain of 83,000 more jobs. So all of these things are kind of considered in the mixed-use and densities and the multimodal transportation and so on. So the 375-page document will have 26 elements that I described, and then the appendices. And then we have tried to make it very reader-friendly and graphics, even in terms of page numbering and sequences. People can very easily relate to what we are trying to say. So that has been the effort. And with that, we will be, we continue to work on the draft. We gave you a preliminary draft, but we continue to work on the draft. It will be released on May 5 as a draft plan for the public. And then we want to hold a public meeting on May 17 so that people have, we can have to review, and they can give us their input, and then we can also describe it to them. In the meantime, we continue to take it to the boards and commission, anyone who wants to listen to us. Besides the tag where they are already represented, we also go and talk to them. Then the Development Review Commission meetings are planned. The hearings are planned on June 27 and July 25. The required notification and required sharing of the draft, 75 days in advance of notifications, have been sent out to all the jurisdictions around because there's all that legality and timeline that we also have to follow on that one. And then we'll come to you on August 10 and August 24 for one and the two hearings. We do want to kind of emphasize that we gratefully acknowledge the support from the members of the Community Working Group that you appointed. There is a list of the 17 members on the right side. They have been very passionate. We meet. There's a lot of discussion that goes on, and they give us a really good guidance. We're also very thankful for the Technical Advisory Group. It's a very large group of 70 people. But at any meeting, there are anywhere between 40 to 60 people who actually attend the meeting in a hybrid format. And we are very appreciative of them, including the, all the three school districts that are represented on the Technical Advisory Group. So that, with that, the day-to-day work is done by five of us. And so we are ready for any questions, guidance, or any thoughts that you may have.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Councilman Keating.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Yeah, I can't believe it's been 10 years since the last general plan. I remember our friend Cole Hickman was on the committee 10 years ago, and I'll send out emails to Tempe residents trying to promote that effort. So wow, I guess the years go by fast. Thank you for your work on this. Thank you to the members of the public who participated. This is a great presentation and an exciting plan. One thing I do want to point out is, I believe you said that you're projecting 15,000 new housing units by 2050. However, our, if I remember correctly, our 2020 housing study said we need 15,000 units by 2040 just to meet current demand. So I'm not expecting a solution to that from this group right now. I'm just making that general comment that we are behind the trajectory that we need to be at. And that's just for current demand, saying nothing about bending the cost curve down. So on that point, I will be bringing up something for a future issue review session later on tonight. But I just wanted to put that out there to the public and to my colleagues that that's kind of where my head's at with that figure. So thank you very much for the thorough presentation, and you guys have done some great work. I'm looking forward to approving this in August.
Thank you so much. Spoiler alert as well for Councilman Keating about future agenda items. I like that. Anyone else? Additional comments, questions from the council? All right. No, I don't have any either, actually. Great job. Thank you so much. Great. That brings us to item number five, but we don't have an item number five this evening because there are no items that are ready for council direction or status update, which would bring us to item number 6B, council committees in progress, updates is needed. Do any council members have updates on item 6B-1, 6B-2, or 6B-3? All right, seeing none. The next item on the agenda is future agenda items. Council members may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session. In accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. I think it's only fair that I go to Councilmember Keating.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Councilmember Hodges and my committee had a presentation from a group called Home Arizona, which are going around to various municipalities and trying to educate elected leaders that housing scarcity is a policy choice. And there's various ways that we can get around that in order to not only meet current demand, but then start bending the cost curve down housing as we continue to add supplies. So I would like that group to come. They wanted 45 minutes. I said the best I can do is 20. Because we're not, I mean, come on. But they want to come and, you know, just kind of give us a presentation and talk to us about housing scarcity and potential solutions to that. Thank you, Mayor.
Sounds good. Mr. City Manager, did that sound good to you?
We got it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right. Anyone else from the council, any other future agenda items? Okay, I don't have any either, which means that moves us to item number eight, which is adjournment at 6:41 PM. I'm not exactly sure when the next work-study session is. I guess I could look to Kara. Do you know when the next meeting is?
Yes, May 11.
May 11. All right. So the next meeting here is May 11, 2023. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.